All right, welcome this morning to our Board of County Commissioners meeting. And as always, we like to start with a prayer, reading or thought and the pledge of allegiance. And we look to the audience for anyone who would like to participate with us in either giving a prayer, reading or thought and pledge of allegiance. And if you come up, if you just state your name for the record, look like Paul's anxious. Okay, you got the prayer?
All honor, America's Freedom Festival. I'll do the prayer. Our Heavenly Father, we're grateful this morning to be able to join together with the county commissioners in this meeting. We're thankful to live in America and we pray for those who are leading the country that they can use wisdom and civility in their discussions and in their decisions. We recognize the challenges that are upon them and upon us. We're grateful to live in this wonderful county and pray that thy direction and care will direct those that lead us. We pray for their wisdom and insight into the problems and challenges that exist. We're thankful for all the cities and towns that are in the county and pray that thou bless the leaders therein. Again, we're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for those that have given their lives in the service of our country. And we're grateful for the hours and hours of service that are rendered by those who believe in the Constitution and those things that allow us to be free. We again express thanks to thee for all things, pray for thy direction and care this very hour, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen. Any volunteers to lead us in a pledge of allegiance? Okay, thank you.
All rise. Please repeat the pledge of allegiance with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Commissioner?
You bet. So, excited to have the opportunity today to introduce our March Employee of the Month. And at this time, we'd go ahead and invite Vic Jones to come forward. Vic is our Employee of the Month for March. I have a little write-up here for you, that little read-off that was written by your peers that submitted you for the Employee of the Month. Here's why Vic has a positive, let's get it done attitude and encourages others to feel the same way through example. He works hard and never acts like he is above any job, both assigned or things that he recognizes just needs to be done. I have been aware of jobs that he does not view as enjoyable and he completes those jobs just the same. He is pleasant to be around, a very good listener. He is good to not just hear people, but to understand their point of view and position in just about any situation and applies that understanding in well-received solutions. Vic has been a person that everyone can trust. When I first started at the county, I heard of our division head at the time referred to him as Honest Abe. He has always shown great integrity and concern for the well-being of the people in and out of his department. He is often the first to volunteer when someone needs help, both at work, at home, or at home, despite his own already busy schedule. Vic likes to have fun. He is creative to find ways in making everyday work projects more enjoyable for the people he supervises. He also finds creative ways to build better, more productive relationships between the employees in our department and to make employees, the public and outside agencies feel comfortable to ask for help from the motor pool and to follow through with those things. Thank you, Vic, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Here's your chance for some words if you want.
I don't know what to say, thank you.
Okay, fair enough, thank you. All right, moving to our, to our agenda, we've got a full agenda, a lot of items on there. We will, we will move all of the items, both on the consent agenda and the regular agenda, temporarily into the consent form so that everything's now consented to, except for what we will go through a process of taking off of consent so that we can have discussion. And just for, for note, for individuals who may be here for a certain agenda item, if there is an item that you'd like to speak to, you can come up to the podium when we're at that item in discussion. On our consent agenda, on our published consent agenda, there's eighteen, or sixteen items. Number two and number three, if we could, Commissioners, if we could hold those for one week in, in talking with Dave Shachroff, he wanted to have an opportunity to kind of look over a few things there. There's, there's a few names that are listed that we probably need to change too, at the bottom, if we could. Okay? Leave that on consent to continue for one week.
Sixteen we can table?
Sixteen, yes, sixteen, sixteen to table, that's fine. If we could also hold number fourteen and fifteen for discussion. Any others on, on the, on the published consent agenda?
Yep.
Okay. Going to our regular agenda now, again, everything is consented to, except for what we pull off. If we could pull off number two. I circled number three, but now I don't know if I know why. Is there any reason to, to hold, pull off three?
I didn't have the reasons.
Okay, okay. If we could, number four, maybe I should get to my second notes. Sorry. Oh, yes, I, I need to hold number three for a, for a comment. The agricultural protection ones, I didn't see any complaints there. I think we're fine to move forward with those unless there's concerns.
My only question was is if we had to hold them to take a formal action? Or if we can just put them on consent as approved without issue? Dave?
This is Peggy.
Peggy?
Um, no, not today, but I will be following up with a document for a continuation, so reauthorization for another twenty years, so if that's what you choose to do today, are we good with that, Dave? Okay, yeah, and then I will follow up in a week or two with the document, the actual reauthorization.
So it's just noted that that's what we're doing on these today? There's, there's like three or four of them, right?
Yes, there's four of them.
You, you might want to state just with regard to complaints that have not been?
Correct, there's not been any complaints. I contacted the Sheriff Department, Environmental Health, and also went through the community development records. These would be for the last, the previous three years before this twentieth year, and there were no written complaints.
Yes, and this is for agricultural protection on different parcels?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. If we could hold number ten, it was requested that we continue number eleven for three weeks, correct, Dave?
Yes.
Hold number twelve. Number twenty-one for action. Number thirty-two. Thirty-four. And those are the only ones that I had listed, any others? Others?
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six? Twenty-six. Oh, yeah, twenty-six. Twenty-six, okay. Okay, do you have those? I'm assuming. Okay, so we'll go back now to item number fourteen. Maybe, maybe before we move there, are there any that we put on consent, on the consent now, that public alike can speak to? Okay, seeing none, then we'll move to, on the published consent agenda item number fourteen, this is to approve and authorize the commission chair to sign a cooperative agreement with the Utah Department of Transportation for reimbursement of corridor preservation funds. Richard, I know we've had discussion on this.
Yes.
And, um... A couple of questions that I have is, is who, who's going to be responsible for tracking these properties and seeking the reimbursement from UDOT?
Um, it'll be Orem City that'll be doing the property purchases and things of that nature. This agreement would not take effect unless UDOT actually takes, or takes jurisdictional ownership of the road, having sixteen hundred north become a state route. At that point in time, we would take whatever properties have been purchased through the corridor preservation fund, put in a request to UDOT-
That's right.
-to have that reimbursement made at that time. If it never becomes a state road, this, this agreement's null and void.
Okay, so that's right. Now you're, you're sparking my memory back to our conversation. So, this agreement is only just in case into the future if this becomes a state road.
Correct, because they've discussed that.
If it never becomes a state road, we're still going to go through the other process in the way of allocations of that.
Right, through the, the MAG process for the corridor preservation.
And we went through the MAG process for three million dollars-
Correct.
-to be used in three years, has to be used in three years-
Right, and they've got-
-for the purchase of property.
-ten or twelve properties that are ready to sell right now. That's where the three million comes into play.
Yeah.
As, as they have others, then there'll be additional requests made through that MAG process.
Okay.
What this does is if, if it does become a UDOT road, then, then UDOT would then pay back corridor preservation fund for these purchases.
And we just want to put this in place before?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. That satisfies my question, any other questions? Okay, a motion to be in order?
Move that we approve consent agenda item number fourteen.
Second? I got a motion and a second to approve consent agenda item number fourteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Number fifteen, I put my phone on silent. This one's to approve and authorize the chair to sign an agreement with, with top- toppers. The, the question came up was, will the retail price be provided in the, in the invoice so that the discount percentage can be verified?
Yes, they, they will do that when they, when they actually create the invoice, they'll-
Otherwise, we would never-
We wouldn't know what the discount was.
So that will be-
Yes.
Okay.
And, and it can change from time to time and based on the, the type of topic that we buy, so-
Right.
Yep.
Okay. Okay, great. Any other questions? Motion to be in order?
Um, move that we approve consent agenda item number fifteen.
Second? I got a motion and a second to approve a gen- consent agenda item number fifteen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That passes three zero. Sixteen was tabled. Moving to our published regular agenda, number, number two, this one's to approve and authorize the commission chair to sign an agreement with Provo City for TRCC tax funding for the construction of the new terminal at Provo Airport. And I'd like to recognize Mayor Cuffusi is here. Mayor, would you like to come up and, and say anything about this? And Isaac as well?
Good morning, thank you for allowing me a few minutes. This is exciting. I feel like every time we get together, great things happen in the city, and this is just another prime example of how working together, we can accomplish huge things that are going to impact the whole community for the better. We, I'm texting right now with people at the legislature and we're on it. It's exciting and Isaac just wants to give a brief little update, but I personally want to thank you for your support in this. I think, I know this is going to be a fantastic thing to have a regional airport with a larger terminal out at, out at our Provo Airport. And as I've been telling all the mayors, it's not the Provo Airport, it's the regional airport, it's your airport, it's our airport, it's all the communities in Utah County, and that's how I hope we all look at it. So, thank you.
Just the, the latest update we're receiving is that last night-
Isaac Paxman?
Isaac Paxman, Provo City Deputy Mayor. We did last night hear that the Senate bill went through with the full nine million that we're asking from the state, and so now it's before the House. And as you may recall, it's the House that really took on to sponsor this, House Majority Leader Francis Gibson and Val Peterson, who's also in leadership, are the banner carriers up there, so everything's looking really good. And we, we would love to send that signal that this gap is closed and we appreciate all the accommodation. This was a, an expedited request, we appreciate your taking time and helping facilitate an expedited review of this and, and so thank you and we, we hope we can move forward and as I've, hopefully you've heard the word, with, with this funding, we could be breaking ground this year and cutting a ribbon next year, which is, is really exciting, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Um, this, this is an exciting project, I think. I, I get a sense that, that we all are excited about, you know, what this project can do, especially for the county and for this area. I, I do have one question, and I legally, whoever, Paul, okay? On the, on the method of payment, it says, "No fund shall be paid to city by county until city has completed the construction of the project and has provided the county final certification of completion, document, documenting that the project has been completed." I think it's a fair statement, the only thing is, is that it's not defined in there what completion means. And I think for, just for the purposes of the county and also to protect the city, if, if we're saying completion is ten gates, no, that's not, that, that's where I'm going with this, though. It's not ten gates, it's four, and, and with the terminal and that, and that area there. And I think, I think it'd be wise for us to put something in there for protection for the county and for the city in this point to, to say what completion means.
Great, Paul Jones with the County Attorney's Office, the project is defined as a four-gate terminal, but, but we can add some language in there just to clarify that the completion is the completion of the four-gate terminal, meaning that it's being occupied and able to be used as a regional airport or some, something along those lines, if you'd like.
I, I would like to see it, just as, just to, just to define it so we know what, what it means.
You can make that part of your motion. Also, I talked with Commissioner Range, so I just put in a, an expiration date of 2023. Sounds like we might be able to move that, shorten that up if we wanted, if you wanted to.
Is there a need for it?
I don't think there's a need, I just think that the city's expectation is going to be done well before then, but I think that that expiration is fine. I think that this is, is an incredible opportunity, and I think that the city's done a great job working with the FAA and getting it to this point and having their own resources. And I think it's going to be an amazing project for the future of the county to promote tourism, to promote economic development. And one note I just want to make is, you know, we often are talking about how tight our county budget is, and so there might be questions that arise, how can we support this project at this level? And I just want to make a note that this is not in our general fund budget, this is not dollars that would, could be legally used for, you know, our elections or our sheriff's department or prosecution or anything else. This is coming from a fund that's specifically there to, that comes from tourism tax and is there to invest in projects that are going to promote tourism in our county, and there's probably nothing that would have more of a direct impact towards that goal than this airport project, in my view.
I would, I would also agree with Commissioner Range that the purpose of this tax is to promote tourism or creation and culture and conventions. When we think about an airport, it covers all of those. It brings people to recreate, it brings people for convention centers, it brings people to experience the rich culture of Utah County, and obviously, they're all tourists, hopefully spending their money, and, and by doing so, they're going to replenish the fund as they contribute to the tax dollars that pay for this. And so, that's the kind of beauty behind this, is, is supporting a project like this actually allows us to increase the amount of money hypothetically, if it'll be in that fund. It is absolutely, without question, in my mind, a very notable and worthwhile project that has far-reaching benefits beyond the tourism aspect. What it will do for economic development, bringing businesses and business leaders into Utah County is phenomenal, so, great, great work.
Thank you. And I, I echo that, so it seems like we're, we're in agreeance all the way across the board with this. I want to note that this did go to our, our tab board as well, and, and you, you rarely see a bunch of business leaders when we're talking about, you know, funding out of this, out of this pot of money, so excited about a, a, a project. And, and this, this project has, has come at a, at a good time, especially looking at the, the funding sources. We've been, we've been putting some money, you know, away, per se, holding it, so that we can do projects just like this, which have, you know, a major impact, not just on that fund itself, but for us as a county. So I think that, you know, we, this is, this is a great opportunity for us, I'm, I'm excited to see where it goes. I, I hope that it goes all the way out to the ten instead of just the four eventually in time, as, 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 you know, demands, you know, come in there. And I know that, that the county, the city, and this, hopefully the state and, and others will contribute, you know, right now at the very beginning, but as this thing ramps up and we start getting more gates down, down the road, I'm sure the airlines will start to kick in too and, and help to fund it in a, in that manner, which is, which gives us more opportunities, so. Looks like we've hit water or oil or whatever.
Air.
Air. And we didn't even talk about a lot of the positives, you know, besides just, and we always talk about economic development, but one of the conversations that we had that I think was a real positive one is, is that if you don't have to travel all the way up to Salt Lake and all the way back and drop somebody off and then come back and then go back up and pick them up and so forth, it takes people off our roads, you know, for travel, it helps with our air quality, so on and so forth, you know, with having an airport here close by. So, that was one of the things that was, that we touched upon, among a lot of others as well. So, thank you for the great work that, that you're doing there and, and jumping on. I know it was a quick one, this was a sprint, and we're not quite finished yet, we've still got some sprinting to do. All right, with that, a motion to be in order.
A move that we approve, agenda item number two.
Second?
With, with the, the comments that clarified the completion date.
Oh, yes, okay.
Or not the, the, what completion means.
Yes. Paul, you've got that right, okay. Okay, a motion and, and a, and a second to approve the regular agenda item number, number two, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes three zero. Do you have a comment to that?
No.
Oh, okay, you're coming up, so I was... All right, thank you, thanks Mayor. Okay, item number three. Okay, um, item number three is to approve and authorize the commission chair to sign an agreement with Utah Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau for the Utah County Fair. And... The only, Joel, welcome. And Callie, welcome. You know, we never announced her in a, in a commission meeting. Well, you know what, before we, before we continue, let's, Joel, introduce who, who's with you.
Okay. Uh, my name is Joel Raker and I'm the president of the Explore Utah Valley or the Utah Valley Convention and Visitors Bureau. Uh, this is Callie Nelson. Uh, we were given the opportunity to produce and work with the county to do this year's Utah County Fair. And one of the first things we did was hire an exceptional county fair director and this is Callie Nelson. Um, Callie, uh, came to us from Henderson, Nevada, uh, but she's a graduate of BYU and also has her master's in events and, uh, what's the exact title?
Event and festival management.
Event and festival management from Edinburgh University in Scotland. So, she, uh, she's had great experience academically, she's got it. She worked for the Sundance Film Festival for a couple of years managing three thousand cats, I mean volunteers. And, uh, just, just really, we're excited that we, that Callie, the timing was right for her to be chosen to be our fair director. And, and we're just excited that the county's, uh, allowing us to get this done. And, uh, this funding will allow us to promote the fair as a tourism item as well as, uh, produce it with the right leadership and everything that, that we know needs to happen for this fair. So.
Great. Any thoughts, Callie?
Now, I'm just happy to be here. This is my first time at a commission meeting, so it's like Parks and Rec in real life. It's really exciting. Now, I'm really excited. I think, uh, this job was really, you know, when I found the posting, I'd actually just looked at my parents and said, man, I just really need a silver lining. And I found this job, so it worked out.
Fantastic.
Well, and I'd like to say, we have a very stringent process when we hire somebody to the, the visitors bureau. And Callie was our sixth interview in a day, six hours of interviewing. And everybody was so ready to give her a complimentary interview and just move on. And she just lit the room up. I mean, we were there for a good hour and we were so excited that, that she made it through to the final six and she ended up being our, our gal. So, we're excited to have her and we have no doubt that we're going to have a successful fair this year. And even though we get about five, six months to get the thing done when you normally have a year, um, but, but beginning the day after the fair, we're going to be looking at year two and doing everything we can to bring in more sponsorship, to put less burden on the county, to have a, a more successful fair that engages more people from the community. And, uh, Callie has got the, the vision and the vitality to get that done and we appreciate the opportunity.
Great. Question for you, Joel. This is, um, as, as we're kind of separating things, it, it appears, it came to my attention that there is some remaining funds that are in there from past years.
That is correct.
That, that are now, those, those funds were, uh, were general funds. And so, we really don't want to mix the funds, the general funds with, with now that are coming out of our TRCC. And so, it's been recommended to us that we take those general funds and maybe send them back to the county.
We were, again, it, it's about twenty, twenty-two thousand, is that right? It's, it's the check, twenty-two, twenty-four thousand in the checkbook balance. We were just going to hold that in reserve. If the county like us to return it, we can. But we were going to, one, one of our goals with the fair, just as we do with Explore Utah Valley, is to have a, a reserve fund. And we were going to hold those funds and then if we have any savings or anything this year, we were going to try to hold the funds so that if there is a concert or if there's something in future years, we have monies there so that we don't have to keep coming back to the county for money. We are aware of it, we, we're, the, the budget that we will provide for you in our fair plan was going to acknowledge those dollars as, as unexpended funds from prior year. And we will keep it separate because we know the initial funding you gave us for the fair is general funds, is it not? And then the TRCC, so we, i- is it all TRCC?
Yeah, and that's, and that's where, that's where per, I would, I would like to have it ref- refunded back.
Okay.
Because the TRCC is a more restricted funding account for us. And, and it'd be easier for us to take that general money, general fund money back into our general fund and then into the future, you know, on funding needs. We can, now that we can tap into that TRCC, it makes it easier for us.
We're, we're good with however the county would like to handle it.
If the county feels the same way.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. We'll, we'll make sure that's returned or if the contract wants to be written, we can get the exact balance and they could reduce the amount we invoice the county for and the monies could be tr- I don't know what's the easiest way.
Let's not do that because I think then we're, then we're mixing the money, yeah.
It's easy to dilute it, okay. We'll just, we'll just make sure we return the fund balance from the county-run fair.
Yeah.
Of two thousand eighteen and the two thousand nineteen funds will be strictly the amounts that, um, are approved by the commission.
It's just easier for us to do it that way, then we can, we can trace it all the way through and it's not, there's not a mixing problem.
No, we're, we're, we're happy to accommodate, that's fine.
Okay. All right. Any other? Okay. Motion would be in order then.
A move that we approve, uh, regular agenda item number three with the noted refund of the general funds currently in the, in the account.
Second. I got a motion and a second to approve agenda item number three. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes three zero. As the class from American Heritage leaves. Are you okay doing that? Are you okay with, um, moving up our, uh, one of the agenda items? So, item number, if we could go to, uh, item number twenty-six. Welcome, Paul.
Thank you, Paul Werner, Freedom Festival. By the way, we did announce last night, if you heard, that Keith Urban will be our Stadium of Fire talent. So, we're excited, we really are. It'll be a great show and we've been three months in the negotiation and finally just signed last week. So, he'll be great.
Is he a legend?
He is for a lot, uh, so we hope he will be-
No one got it.
We also have, we also have Chuck Norris coming to be a part of the festival. He'll be one of the grand marshals for the parade and, uh, will be honored at the gala and also will make a statement to the troops, uh, at Stadium of Fire.
Yeah, fantastic.
Uh, so I appreciate you coming and your presentation and reviewing the documents. It looks like we have pretty much the exact same contract as we had last year.
Right.
Um, obviously there were still some hiccups last year. I just was curious what changes you've made to your rules and policies you feel will eliminate some of the problems that we've had to make sure every taxpayer who's contributing this money has an equal opportunity to participate in the festival.
Uh, you, uh, you weren't able to come to the meeting where we met, uh, and so we added in the parade room.
And I, I've been briefed on that and reviewed those, I just want it for public comment. So, the public's aware of those changes because that was a meeting that unfortunately was not a public meeting.
Right.
And so, I want to make sure that there's a public record of that.
So, based on our discussion with those that were in that meeting, we added that statement without any restrictions in the real parade rules, that there'll be no discrimination on any other, any reason. And so, that was actually put in, based on our discussion, we put that into the grand parade rules. And we can adjust it in here in terms of taking it off for those items that, uh, are just county-supported. So, those last few, uh, that last sentence. So, in the, in the, uh, item from last year where it indicates that if you have glasses, you can read it better than if you don't, down when it says this section specifically applies to those events sponsored by Utah County, we can just take that sentence off.
And, and for, for me, that's not really pertinent because I feel like I'm giving the Freedom Festival money.
Right.
Uh, and if I'm giving you money, it kind of goes to everything, even though we might line item it out here and there, which is appreciative for accounting purposes. Uh, I don't like Planned Parenthood getting taxpayer money because they provide abortions. And they claim, well, we don't use taxpayer money to do that, but the reality is the money helps. And so, when I look at it, for me, I just look at it as all-inclusive. So, I don't see a necessity to remove those. I'm just appreciative that you've made those changes that were discussed there and, and the efforts that you've put forward on those.
We, we really, we've, thank you. We've really spent a lot of time going through those to make sure that it's really applies to everybody so that it can be a great celebration of the Fourth of July for everybody.
And I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Paul, so, I just want to clarify, I think I heard you say that a non-discrimination clause has been added not only to the contract now, but also to the-
The parade rules, the actual parade rules, yeah. So, after we put down our vision, then we added that non-discrimination clause in the parade rules.
Right. I was just trying to see online if the, of the parade rules were, uh, posted. I think that there were a couple of other small, very small word changes that might suggest.
Yeah, we did that. So, we, we need to change that. We're going to meet with the Herald this Friday so that they can, uh, publish it and then we'll put it on the webpage as we've changed it.
Okay.
So, that's what the process is right now.
Yeah. I would, I would say that, um, for me, I'm, I'm grateful that you added that non-discrimination clause to the, to the policies. And I think that some of the language about, um, there was a way to draft some of the definitions section to make, make it clear that, um, from a religious liberty perspective, all were welcome.
Yeah, we, that one word we took off that was a concern to us as we visited, so we took that out.
Thank you.
Thank you. We welcome, uh, everybody in the county. It's going to be a great year. In fact, I was thinking about the parade route as I came down today. It's going to be an interesting year for the parade because of the way the, uh, Utah Valley Express has added some challenges up and down university. But we think we can get through it and we'll look at other years if there's other places, uh, better to do it. But we don't think there is in terms of down university and so, we'll just move forward. And thank you for your support, very, very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Thank you, Paul.
All right, a motion would be in order?
A move that we approve, a regular agenda item number twenty-six.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to approve agenda item number twenty-six. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes three zero. All right, let's go back to... Oh, this is Paul.
Now you're up, Paul.
Now you're up.
You're so excited.
Number four on our regular agenda.
Yeah, it sounded like it was half grown, half Paul right then, I don't know. I will note that Keith Urban is not an American, but, uh, it should still be an exciting show. And I was talking to Amelia and she said that Chuck Norris is, uh, twice the American as most, so it is, so it evens out.
You still didn't get my joke though, did you?
A legend, I don't know where you're coming from on that.
He's an urban legend, Paul.
Urban legend.
Urban legend, oh, okay. Commissioner Ivey's there with you on the dad jokes.
Yeah, we, we get the dumb dad jokes.
Okay. On this one, I know there's a lot on this one, on, on the recommendation letter on these. There was, there was two of them that I wanted to look at for consideration, um, possibly different than what was recommended. It's the, uh, well, let me back up. One of them, I, I wanted to, wanted to look at and make sure that the opt, all options were given to this individual, um, for what can be done. And the second one I'd like to look at as a possible consideration for doing something different than what was recommended. Let's put it that way. The first one is, uh, the Oldroyd. Kind of at the bottom. And the only, I just, I just wanted, wanted to make sure, um, I mean... I think, I think us up here, we know what businesses are like. Businesses come and go and they fail and they succeed at times. And, and, and that's, that's, that's what America is all about, you know, taking a chance and doing something. And, and I think this individual's trying his best to come out of a bad situation. He says he's got a million dollar payoff that he's going to have to go through. And I don't think the, I don't think it's our responsibility necessarily to lighten that. I, all I, all I want is there were some recommendations in there that maybe instead of losing his house to a tax sale, that, that we, uh, make sure that he understands that he can, he can apply for, um, a payment plan. And that was, that was all that I was, was looking at is that we give him all those opportunities to, um, to do a, a, a payment plan.
Um, if you want to pull that one off, I can, I can just make sure that that option was made available to him. I don't know if, uh, if staff had made that.
There was, they did.
I mean, to him, I don't know.
Oh, okay.
I don't know if they had that discussion with him. Terry in my office would may, may have done that, but she may not have. And so, I can, we can make sure that gets done. If you're, let me just make sure-
Are you okay with doing that, Commissioner, just pulling it off, make sure that's been the least recommended to him?
Now, is it Scott Oldroy?
Yes.
Steve?
I didn't really, there's a pending tax sale?
Well, five years is up and so, may will be that.
So, his property is likely subject to the tax sale here coming up?
And part of the problem is, is that from what I, as I read down through it, at least in, in, from his explanation, is that he just sold the house, but his house is connected to a lot of these past. And so, I just wanted to make sure and give him the opportunity.
If there's immediate action on a payment plan, to be able to forestall that.
Yeah. I, it, it's one of those where I, I see an individual trying to pay things off and I'm taking his word for it as I'm reading it here, um, instead of just filing bankruptcy and, and dumping it on everybody. So, I just want to give-
I haven't seen a request for, um, a payment plan come from him. So, I, he may not have been given that option because I haven't seen that request come through.
Yeah, I just want to make sure he has that option.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay. So, if we're okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And...
There was another one that's left there.
Bluth. Yeah, the Bluth. Can we get to that one?
There was a medical, there was a medical need where payment was late. And I would be, I would be okay with, um, forgiving penalties and interest on that, abating it.
Like seventeen dollars or something? Okay, are you okay with that too?
Yep.
Okay. And you got that, Paul? On that?
I got that.
On the Bluth one? Any, any others on that list? Okay. So, with that, um, a motion would be in order with those, with those two?
A move that we approve the property tax issues contained in recommendation, uh, letter twenty nineteen dash five, noting a hold on the Scott Oldroy and, uh, issue, ensuring he can be notified of a payment option plan and as well as abating the penalties on the Bluth property.
Second. I got a motion and a second. Uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? That passes three zero. Okay, that takes us to, uh, uh, regular agenda item number ten is to approve and authorize the commission chair to sign an agreement with the Pleasant Grove City for TRCC funding for the construction of and renovation of Pleasant Grove Discovery Park. We'd like to welcome the mayor, Mayor Fugel's with here and, and Scott Derrington is also here. You're up, Mayor. Welcome. Tell us about the project. I want, we've heard it, but give us some more.
Well, we're grateful for the opportunity to, uh, come for you this morning and, uh, uh, ask for additional funding for our, uh, redo of our, uh, Discovery Park in Pleasant Grove, a park that's been over twenty years a great service to our community and how it was constructed in the beginning and how we're going to do it in the past. And also that, uh, we will, uh, it's a, a definitely, uh, one of the jewels of, uh, Utah County and the different parks around. And a lot of people come to our community, uh, with their children and grandchildren specifically for that. And we know there's others been built similar to this in, in, uh, in the past. But, uh, it's time to redo and, and we ask for continued support from you. And our first, uh, funding, uh, we've asked from the county to go towards this in anything in our community. So, that's, uh, what we asked today, that, uh, he would increase our funding level for that, particularly from what the recommendation was. from what the recommendation was.
Okay.
As we've stated before, this park is about a million dollar park, so we're gonna have about, we need about six hundred thousand dollars in cash to pay for materials, but the building of the park is gonna be all volunteer labor from the community, which will save us probably about four hundred thousand dollars by our estimates. The funding of this park, we're asking for the TRCC grant, up to two hundred thousand dollars, and I know that's what you'll be discussing here in a minute, but we do have some donations, some private donations that are already, we have fifty thousand dollars already from our, our naming rights sponsor and we have some others, some private money that has come in as well. The public also has an opportunity to donate money, they could buy a picket for seventy-five dollars, they'll have their name on a picket and we've had quite a few of those come rolling in just in the last two weeks as we started ramping that up. The remainder of the funding's gonna come from Pleasant Grove City, from our newly passed care tax to bridge whatever gap has left of money we don't get through the county and through the donations. So that's our funding plan and we appreciate your help in participating in that. Sorry, Scott Derrington, I'm the city administrator of Pleasant Grove.
Thank you. In, in going down through this and, and in looking at it, that is recommended from the tab board, they did recommend the eighty-seven five. The original ask for this was three hundred thousand dollars that went to the tab board and they, they recommended, the tab board did recommend the eighty-seven five. In, in looking at this, I had spoken with the mayor and Scott on a couple of occasions, you know, trying to find, you know, a balance of where that's, where that's at and, and personally, as I look at the funding that we just bas- recently did with Orem City, they came in asking ninety thousand and we gave them fifty, it's about a fifty-five percent, you know, of their, of their original ask. I, I would feel comfortable at the hundred and fifty thousand dollar range being consistent with, with what we've done in the past with, with Orem City, but I think that's a discussion that we need to, that we need to have.
When I look at these, I tend to look at, you know, our total contribution to the project as, as a whole, you know, in keeping our percentages consistent and also making sure we're trying our best to evenly distribute. I was actually fine at the two hundred thousand mark, but we find it one fifty as well, I wouldn't back away from that, but I was, I was good with the full funding in part because of the fact this is their first ask, the first time that Pleasant Grove's come for this type of money. That would be my justification for the additional money. And in Orem's situation, we've given them the, well, it wasn't the storytelling building now, it's-
The other park?
The park and library and so as a city, they'd received a little bit more, so I was like, eh, you've kind of gotten a good chunk so far. And with this being our first additional ask, that was why I was fine at the two hundred thousand. And it keeps us at the twenty percent threshold or less of the total project house.
Actually less, I think. The three hundred thousand was the-
It's about a million dollar total.
A million dollar total, right?
I'm also supportive of the project. I do appreciate that not every city knows about the availability of these funds and it has been, is the first ask from this board and it's a great project and it'll help a lot of, I looked at the design with you, it's gonna be a great family oriented park, involves the community, so I'm, I'm supportive of it and I also would support it at the, at the two hundred thousand dollar level.
Great.
Okay, a motion would be in order then.
I move that we approve agenda item number ten with, at the maximum amount, the two hundred thousand dollar level.
Second?
I had a motion and a second to approve agenda item number ten for the two hundred thousand dollar level. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, can I just make one comment on that?
Sure.
You know, I think that there is another distinction to be made in that some of the projects that we are approving now presented to the tab board last year and I think that making the significant investment that we just did in the Provo Airport, there is limited resources and I think we all feel pretty strongly about the impact of that. The one consequence is that there is less funding in that fund in the near term for additional projects that might come in this year because we've just made that investment. But the one that we approved this week, the one we approved last week have been through the process last year and I think it's fair to continue to let those through.
And I, and I know we had that conversation with the tab board, you know, just kinda allowing them to see that when we, when we fund at higher levels, that means that we're gonna have to fund at lower levels in the future, so I think they're, they're on board with that too. Okay, number ten, or number eleven was continued for three weeks. Number, number twelve is to adopt, deny and ordinance to amend the Utah County zoning map, the critical environment CE one to, to the residential agricultural RA five zone.
Brandon Larson, Community Development Staff. This is an application you've seen, well, a variation of it, you've seen it before, but so the applicant is proposing to again rezone a hundred and twenty acres in the Payson Canyon area. This property is essentially about three quarters of mile from the mouth of the canyon, canyon, so property right now is zone CE one, that is our most restrictive zone. You have to have fifty acres to build one home. They're proposing the property be rezoned to the RA five zone, that would allow fi- one home per five acres. I think it's important to look at the, the intent of the CE one zone versus the RA five zone. The CE one zone, the land use ordinance says that the CE one zone covers the canyon, mountain, riparian and other areas of environmental concern in Utah County, its land in native pasture, watershed and wildlife, wildlife habitat, whereas the RA five zone is land that's been historically irrigated and used for growing of crops and raising of, of livestock. And you can, can read the rest of that, but as staff reviewed this application, staff felt that the property was appropriately zoned in the CE one zone. Staff had actually worked in the past with, with the applicants to, to actually give, work with them to, they, they had a forty acre piece of land that, that's less than fifty acres to build one home, but because of a road dedication, they were actually able to build two homes. The, the county's position back in around two thousand eight was if the, the road was dedicated, that would effectively create two building lots and so the Troyers actually have received, have been benefited by the, the county in, in the past in helping them to establish two dwelling sites on, on the property. And so the-
Is that, what is the mechanism by which that is allowed? Is that just a permitted, a conditional use or how is?
It was actually, it was the position of the county that the road dedication actually effectively created a legal division of that land and the, the definitions of the ordinance were such that it actually allowed for two dwelling sites rather than one. I think that's been tightened up a little bit since then, I don't know if it would work today, but, but back in two thousand eight, it did, it did work for them to actually obtain two dwelling sites. This went to the planning commission, the planning commission voted four to two, recommended denial on a four to two vote. They found, the planning commission, as does staff, that this proposal does not conform with the land, the general plan, it is not in the best interest of the health, safety and welfare of the public and it is not in, in harmony with the intent and purpose of the, of the land, land use ordinance. One of the, some of the concerns as far as the general plan is concerned with this application, the applicant has, has, in, in staff's opinion, failed to demonstrate that this application won't be an impact, it won't impact the watershed. It may, may not impact the watershed, but there's just been no information put forward by them to demonstrate that it won't impact the watershed area. Some of the concerns with the watershed area, of course, is if you add more houses there, it could potentially increase pollution sources. One of the, the things that the general plan says is when you, when you rezone property to the RA five zone, you're supposed to show historic irrigation of the property and that hasn't been demonstrated. As far as it relates to public, to the interest of the health, safety and welfare, again, we point to the watershed protection, there's, there's just kind of a hole in their application we feel as, as it relates to the, to the watershed, whether or not it is a watershed area, is it, is it going to be protected, is it gonna be impacted? Couple of other things relative to the health, safety and welfare of the public, this is an area of increased, let me say this, it is an area with increased fire requirements. It's in the urban wildland interface and so it's, it's an area that has additional fire requirements for when you build homes. Additionally, it's in the natural hazards overlay zone, there's increased requirements for constructing in that area, but it also suggests that there's a susceptibility to natural hazard, natural hazards in the area there. The, the four that we look at in the, the natural hazards overlay zone are surface fault rupture, debris flow, landslides and rockfall. And I, I know there is a fault line lying, I believe in a portion of the north of the, of the property. I think debris flow is another concern. The other concern, there may be also rockfall and landslide issues as well. Staff believes as far as it relates to the, the land use ordinance, the land use ordinance says that one of its intents is to encourage and facilitate orderly growth and development in the county. Staff's concerned that if you increase residential densities or the potential for such in an area that's maybe prone to wildfires and, and natural hazards, we're concerned about that, we're concerned about increasing density in a mountain canyon area and so we would recommend denial of the application.
Can I ask you a question? It was a four to two vote in the planning commission, you probably articulated the four side, what about the two side? Why did they, why did they vote differently?
I don't recall a strong sense as to why. I know that one of the people that voted against it, I don't recall making a strong, strong argument or, or really making much of an argument for, for voting against it. The other, I, I do not recall exactly why he voted against it. The minutes would, maybe Mr. Moore, you can help me on that, I do not recall.
My recollection, this is Robert Moore, County Attorney's Office, it was related to property rights and concerns about property rights. Just for information, the planning commission in January did a site visit on this property and did a, walked up and down that canyon and looked at it. This is the conclusion.
Property rights was, yes, I think that would be accurate. Also, two other points I need to, to make on this that you'll wanna know about, that I recently learned that a portion of this property, particularly the portion owned by the Mowers, which I think is about twenty acres, is in a, an application, it's in an annexation proposal with Payson City. Payson City's planning commission met on this proposal on February twenty-seventh and recommended approval of that annexation proposal. Now that's just twenty acres of that proposal, it's, it's actually a, a large number of acres, mainly to the west of this property, running from the Niebo Loop Road across, over the top of the hills and mountains there, over to the, to the homes that are kinda on the bench on the, on the south side of the, the town there.
So that brings up a question.
Yes.
Because this, this property touches TR five-
It does.
It touches RA five-
Yes.
And it also touches Payson's R twelve, I don't know what it is, R one twelve?
R one twelve.
R one twelve?
Yep.
And if, if that twenty acres that we're talking about is annexed into the city, would they keep it as CE one? Or would they change it to RA five or their-
I'm not sure what the-
R one twelve?
I haven't seen their proposal. I do know that in an email from their, their planner to me, it said that their, they, the planning commission recommended approval of the application contingent upon the creation of a land management plan for a hundred and forty-six acres of, of that annexation area to be dedicated to Payson City for public property. That's all the information I have, that's all the specifics I have on the proposal for-
What's the likelihood of them leaving it as a CE one?
I don't even, I don't think that Pace, I'm not aware that Payson City has a CE one zone. I know they have something similar to an RA five zone, but as, as, as far as CE one, I think they've purposely left this land of, it's my understanding they purposely left, would like to see this land stay in the county and have not annexed it because they feel that the CE one zone is appropriate and so that leads me to believe maybe they don't have a zone similar to the CE one zone, but I, I don't know that.
Commissioner, let me, again, Robert Moore, let me just address that question. The planning commission, part of their concern on this one, why they wanted to do a visit, was they wanted to figure out where the canyon kinda started, because as you look at the current zoning, it's for watershed protection up a canyon and so the question they were trying to resolve in their mind is what is the canyon versus what's not in the canyon? I think that their determination was this was clearly up the canyon as opposed to being down, down inside the canyon. And so I don't know about this current twenty acres, but your question raises the exact same question the planning commission raised and is where's the canyon versus non-canyon? Where's it appropriate for CE one? Where's it appropriate for more development? And that's what they were looking at when they went and did their site visit.
The other thing I was going to know that I think is already established in the staff plan and that's just that there is one property owner who's had their land included in this application, who's opposed to the application and is not an applicant, so that's a very small portion of, of the proposal, so.
Okay. The applicants here, would you like to speak to it?
Art Troyer, I'm the, one of the landowners. We, we appreciate your time, this has been kind of a learning experience for us, we'd never done this before, so it's been, it's been good for us and we appreciated Brandon's time especially for his efforts in helping and, and your time and your individual time as you've sat down with us to help us. Just a little, little history, what happened, we, we purchased a property, it was thirty-five acres and the county, we went to the county to see if there's any way we could work with them. The county asked us to, to deed the road to them, they said it's, it would be healthy, more healthy for the environment and for the county. If the county owned the road, because we owned the road, we owned both sides of the road and the road and so they asked us if they would deed the county, deed the land to them, so we did, we did, we just donated the land, the property to them and they, they deeded the, so the, the road is now county property. What happened, it was Payson City had, when they built their holding tank, had, had taken a quarter acre, for some reason, I don't know why, and they, they weren't sure why. Payson City was nice to work with us, we, they, they had a quarter of the, a quarter acre that bordered the holding pond, they, they said they thought they needed, so it made everything illegal. So we went to the county and the county said, well, if you'll split this up, then it'll make the parcel on the, on the mountain side will be legal and so we'll give you a building for, for that. Then they said, if you can go to Payson City and get Payson City to put that quarter acre back in your parcel, then that'll make that illegal parcel as well. So we did that, we went to Payson City and Payson City put that, deeded that back in our property, which made it illegal, so we, we tried to stay legal, every, everything we've done, we tried to stay legal and everything we've, we've participated with and done everything the county's asked us to do. A couple of concerns, where, where the concern of the, the county, of the planning commission is that it's better for the, the health and welfare of the county. When we bought that property, it was a dump ground, we bought it from Payson Livestock Association, it, it was used for their holding ponds, for their holding trails when they bring the cows off the mountain, that was their holding corral, so we bought it from Payson Livestock and there was, we took probably weeks and, and truckloads of couches and chairs and, and refrigerators and stoves and there was drug deals going on. We, when we finally, I, we, we thought we'd leave it open just because we wanted to leave it open to, to the public and we got to the point where we had so much traffic through there and, and the day we put up the fence, there was a, a really nice car that, there's a road that came off into the, by the creek side and then came back up out and a really nice car drove down there and then a beater truck drove down in there and, and we're pretty sure it was a drug deal and there's drug deals going on, we- And there's drug deals going on. We, we found a lot of drug paraphernalia up there when we were cleaning it up. So I think being present helps protect. And that's what we're saying. We just feel like the, a presence of, a feeling of presence protects the property and the county. So I think, we think it's better for the county and for the welfare of the county to have property, property owners on that, that property. Our biggest concern, and we've shared that with you, our biggest concern is when Payson City built the holding pond, they piped all the water from the holding pond down to their other holding pond in town. There's been, and I'm, I'm not, again, this is, I'm not a legal attorney, I'm anything, I just, we talk about watershed and watershed says an area or ridge of land that separates waters flowing to different rivers, basins or seas. Right now, the watershed from that holding pond down to their holding pond, there is no watershed. There's no, the river, there's no river. They shut the river off for six months of the hottest times of the year, uh, for irrigation purposes for the golf course and the, and, uh, and strawberry water uses some of that, it uses, uses some of that. And again, they pipe it over to their other holding pond. So right now, I mean, if you shut water off for six months of the hottest months of the year, it's going to kill all the vegetation. We have, we have deer and we have other animals drinking out of our water tanks. We have horses up there. We have, keep our horses up there. We have deer drinking out of our water tanks because there's no water in that creek from that, from that holding pond down. And, and so we think it's, it, for the health and welfare of the community, it's much better if we can, and I'm going to have to put drip lines off of my well to every, every tree I want. I'm going to have to buy more water shares underground. Uh, because we can't get any underground water shares because Payson City's bought all those up. Because they're, they plan on putting a reservoir, they're planning on putting a reservoir in that canyon. And so they bought all the, up ground, up ground water rights and I can't get any of those. So that's our challenge is, is we just, uh, we don't see, I mean, the watershed, they keep bringing watershed, but there's no, there's no river there. And, and so there's no watershed for six months of the year. Um, and so our concern is, and as we've set in all these meetings, I think our concern and the concern of the counties is both the same. We want to, we want to protect and, 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 uh, and beautify the canyon. And right now, if we, if we go with the, with what's happened in the past, the, the, what, what, what's we've done in the past 14 years as we've owned the property, it's not going to beautify or protect the canyon. It's going to make it more, more prone to fires and, and other things. So that, that's, that's, that's a challenge we have. Payson's, Payson's, uh, concerns was they didn't want, they eight, I think we have a total of six to eight building permits is what we'd get, um, on, on all the property owners. Payson City's now, and we, I got the letter too, Payson City now wants to bring high density housing into the Mowers place, which is, that's the same area. And, and so I, I don't understand why Payson City's concern was, we think you're going to bring more trucks and more cars and more traffic on our streets. When in reality, they've just given a vote to say, we're going to have high density housing versus RA five. So I, I'm not sure, and I'm not sure if, if Mayor Wright ever signed that letter. He didn't, he hadn't signed it when we were at the planning commission, he hadn't signed it. So I don't know if he didn't sign it just because of that, because he knew what they were doing, what plans were. And it would look pretty sad to have your name and signature on a paper saying, we don't want any more traffic in that area. And then we're approving that much acreage to be put into higher density housing. So I, I'm not sure why, but, but.
My understanding, can I ask a question?
Yes, sir. Oh, yes, sir.
The, the, um, my understanding was that that also came with a dedication to become a public park or something of a significant amount of acreage?
And I'm not sure on that. I'm sorry.
I, I also, because my, I, I unfortunately had to work that day. I try to attend every meeting I can. And I, I got to work last night too, so I'm a little tired. But anyhow, I, I'm a fireman, fire medic. My name's Aaron Troyer. I'm sorry. But yeah, my wife, I had her attend that meeting with our children and she said that it was a good meeting. I mean, there was a lot of people that were, that were, had good valid questions of what's going on. The, Payson does still have some concerns on it, the fact that they, you know, they're going to get a lot of land donated, donated to them. And they already struggle with the land that they currently have to maintain. And so how are they going to continue to maintain even more than what they have because they're struggling maintaining what they already own? And so, you know, that being said, uh, the meeting, I think it definitely shows that if you have deep pockets, you can turn heads. And the developer that's hoping to do that, he, he does have about 200 acres he's seeking to, uh, obtain from Jim Maurer. Patterson, Patterson Homes is the one that's, that's opened up the application. But then he's willing to give, gift half that property back to Payson City for them to maintain. I remember this about six years ago, when I was selling homes full time, I quit doing that because I wanted to start setting up my retirement and I went into firefighting full time. But long story, I was sold homes for Arrive Homes, which is again, a very large dense, dense, uh, high density. You're talking fifth, uh, tenth of an acre parcels, right there at the mouth of the Pace, of Payson Canyon. Very notorious now, it's on the map because an airplane flew into one of the homes across the street from the home that we own. But when I was selling homes for them, they were deeding two acres to Payson City. And it was a bear to attend those meetings and it was fun to watch my, I worked head and hand in hand with Dean and Dean Ingram and Steve Maddox and, and, uh, Mike Scoville. They struggled trying to convince Payson that it was going to be beneficial for them to have those two acres for the community to have a walking trail. And Payson continually said, no, we want, in my, just sitting back in those ob, observations, kept seeing, seeing like they wanted more, they wanted more. They wanted the developer then to completely improve it for them and then turn it over to them. And so it was so less maintenance for them to have to do, um, which is, which is fine. But it was just interesting that now that it's there, they're struggling with two acres to maintain. And we live right there in that, it's called the hollow, um, it goes to the little trail system. And, and I work with some of the guys that constantly have to cut down to the dead fall on the tree and they're always cussing and cursing. You know, that, that, that short little two acres that we, was donated to Payson City. So I, I can only imagine how much fun it's going to be watching them try to manage hundreds of acres, you know, well over 100 acres that they want to bring into that canyon. And, and so like I said, and, but, but what all it does is opens the door for potential, um, that they, it's not a stone's throw away from where that property, where the upper water, water tower is that Patterson Homes put in so they could develop homes up into the orchards. You're a stone's throw away from that 19 acres where they're building homes right now, up, right up on the face of that hill, which again is part of that hazard, natural hazard overlay, which they're doing everything that we did to satisfy the requirements. You know, uh, fire sprinkler system, suppression system in the home, uh, clearing up so much of the ground around their home, reducing fuels and so on and so forth. So the biggest thing, you know, I was concerned of, and I voiced this, um, to the one lady, our neighbor Becky, she was the one that did not sign. Um, she hasn't been to the last couple of meetings. I don't believe she's here either, um, today. So I don't know if she's actively opposing it anymore. She, she has two acres of land, but I brought to her the attention that, yeah, that's fine and dandy that, that, you know, you, I, I can see that you want to maintain the, the mountain landscape that we do enjoy. I enjoy it. We're talking, you know, one home on five acres is what we're seeking. And if anything, I'm trying to bring the zoning more appropriate to her home and, and where she only owns two acres. Whereas I said, you know, I totally could see you opposing this if you own 50 acres and you didn't want us to take away a CE one zone. But, you know, you have two acres. I mean, I'm, we're seeking to bring it even closer to what your home is, is currently sitting at. And then I brought to her the, the, the fact that when I first noticed last in the meeting in December, that that was on their annexation plan, Payson City's updated annexation plan. And, and don't get me wrong, we've tried to annex to Payson before. And, and we were, you know, they, they have no plans to annex to us. They had no plans. And we don't have 100 acres to donate to them to try to convince them to annex us. But we all, we are stuck in that hard, in a pickle where we're losing our, you know, the water that's in that canyon, we're losing the hold. And I think one, my dad did mention last time, um, and, and our, in the meeting with the planning commission, that the CE one zone was, was slapped on this, this state and, you know, this, this county by the national government. And we saw how well the national government did with the forest ma, management up Payson Canyon. And so I think if we can, you know, throttle back a little bit of the overhead control of the national government and, you know, with the critical environment and, and maybe focus a little bit more on local control and, and understand that, you know, we're, we're not seeking large, large development here. We're just trying to secure, um, you know, a small estate that we have up the canyon that is, to be honest with you. I, and we've got 35 acres as a family with, now I have my sister living across the street. Uh, her husband works full time. And I, my dad comes up on spring break as, he lives in St. George and he's up here for a spring break rather than sitting on a beach in the Bahamas. He's up here trying to help us get this to, to come to fruition because we, we know we spend weeks in the springtime cutting down dead fall, burning, burning back fuels because we reduce that fire hat. We, we know that if you're getting homes and, and ownership up that canyon, you're reducing the fire hazards that were sweeping, sweeping that valley back in August. And it was fun when I, I actually fought some of those fires because I was deployed to go fight up in Elk Ridge. And it was interesting that when I woke up one morning and I saw a bunch of hot shots across the street on our property getting ready to prepare for a backburn, I'm like, whoa, what's going on here? And they're like, yeah, our incident command from Atlanta, Georgia said that we're going to start a backburn here. Because it was the, the, an area with lesser fuels, it's been, you know, it's been a little bit more maintained and updated. That we're, that's a good stronghold for us to begin a backburn to push it back on itself. I said, well, that's very ambitious, but you know, the person, you know, with all due, you know, can, uh, uh, you know, respect, somebody that doesn't live here and doesn't understand how the entire valleys and systems and winds, wind patterns, you know, can change very quickly, especially in canyons. And typically you have the prevailing winds coming from the west that are going to keep it in a canyon that 10 years before that, it never left that canyon up in dry canyon. And so we were pretty confident it wasn't going to come into that direction and it was no, there was no reason to introduce fire that early into this, into this, into the canyon. So long story longer, we had a miracle come through. It rained that day when we were trying to convince IC that they needed to hold off on the backburn. And they called us the next morning and said, hey, you know what? We're not going to be backburning. We're going to spend all day Monday with good weather, just suppressing it where it is and, and, and holding lines far, farther up the canyon. But that being said, we know that, yes, you build a house somewhere, there's a potential that it does increase some fire hazard. But there's a greater potential, potentialist when it comes to wildland for them to reduce it by putting in driveways, by cleaning up areas around the home as required by building code in a, in a, in the zone that we're in. Or this, the overlay of the natural hazard overlay, that we will reduce fuels up that canyon. And then last, I know Jed Morley, I, I, I sat down and spoke with him. We, we sort of roped them into this with us because, because they had, um, a large portion of the, of this property in, in our request. And their property did have a small four acre parcel that was, um, and I know I've discussed this with a couple, and I, you, uh, but Commissioner Ivy and Commissioner Lee, you're probably sick of talking with me. I, I appreciate your time. I had a chance to sit with you this last year. But I, I met with your, your assistant commissioner, Ange, and I apologize, this is just trying to verbally vomit everything that, you know, what we're trying to do. But long story is what we're, um, in talking to Jed finally, he wished he could have been here. He said he had to go to Phoenix, uh, today. And he was trying to push his flight back, but he didn't make it here today. However, I did sit down with them and he said his intent right now, they are not, you know, and, and this is another reason I think I did discuss it with Becky, that his intent is not to immediately start developing and put one home on five acres of, of his 50 acres that he has. He has no intentions to do that. He does know that in the long scheme of things, you know, it's going to help in, with his property. But he also is going to keep him in a green belt, uh, opportunity that he, he wants to be in. He does have horses. I know his son spent a, a good portion of this last fall trying to fence their property because they're trying to get it back into a green belt situation and put their horses and livestock on it. So, um, that being said, we want to continue to use the property up that canyon as livestock, as, as agricultural, which is what it was intended for. We don't feel as though, we're not changing the watershed. Um, we're staying in the same family of zoning of critical environment, uh, and, and agricultural being an agricultural zone. So we're not seeking a change, we're just seeking to amend what we feel is, is, is a hazard up that canyon where we're living and also be closer to our family.
Sorry, can I just, one more thing, and I, well, you mentioned about the, the planning commission meeting. The two that were, that did not go for the, I mean, didn't, that vote no. Um, I can tell you, and you can look at the notes and see what they said. They said that we've, we've approved other, um, like things like this, why won't we approve this one? So again, I think it goes back to, we don't have deep pocket, sorry. We're, I'm a school teacher and I couldn't be on the Bahamas anyway. If I saved all my money, I could get gun locked from St. George. So we're not going anywhere long, but, but the reason they said, the two, the, the two abstaining, both of them, they said that it was because they've approved this same thing for other places and other canyons, why won't we approve this one? And, and again, I, I think it's probably because we, we don't have a lot of things to give, we can't give a lot. But, but it's the same thing. It's the same concept that we're, we're trying to sell, it's just that we don't have what we can. The, the concern also, the planning commission had asked us to do, um, soil tests, uh, which we didn't know about until we got there. But we've, we've ran, we paid thousands of dollars for two soil tests on both homes. We have soil tests on the mountain side and soil tests on the, on the creek side saying the soil is stable. And, uh, and that's why the county gave us, and those are on county records. The county required us to do that to get our building permits for those two homes. So we have done soil tests. We've done per, perk tests on both sides. Both perk tests were fine. So the perk tests and the soil tests were all fine. Uh, that was one of the concerns the planning commission had. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Do we bring it back up here for discussion? Um, in, in looking, in looking at this for myself and, and seeing it, I know we've, we've, we've kind of mulled this over back and forth and, and seeing that there is RA five on, on a side of it and all TR five and R112 on there. I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of, uh, adopting the ordinance, um, to change the, to amend that so that they can, they can move forward and, and, and I think, I think some of the points that they, they bring out are valid. With individuals up there, uh, it, it does, it does create more eyes on what's going on in the canyon. And, and the water is, is an interesting one. If, if they're piping all that water underneath, the watershed and collection is up above. And, and that's where the, the collection part is and that they're going to have to run drip lines to all their trees and so forth to keep those trees alive. Because I'm sure you're having a lot of dead trees if, if you don't have an active creek that's coming down there. So I'm, I'm, I'm supportive of, of adopting that or amending that, that change.
I appreciate you coming. I have some concerns about this and I, I need to, you know, I would be open to learning more. But, you know, one of the concerns is that when you mentioned, you feel like you need deep pockets or that the, the, the planning commission, you know, would make those, those statements. It should have nothing to do with the decisions that we make here. And I, and I'm concerned and, and I'm, I'm aware of some of those issues. I, I'm concerned that there have been times where they're critical environmental, immediately adjacent to cities that, um, developers have been able to get approved that might not have been in the best interest of those communities. Or certainly should have been done in collaboration with the cities. And so to me, this would be the type of project that would be best done in coordination with the city of Payson. And making sure that everyone is, make sure that, that your application addresses the concerns for, uh, why it should not be critical environmental or why some additional development makes sense there, why the city would support it. I'm not sure we want developments in little islands in, in the county that you kind of have to pass through Payson property to, to get to, uh, to service. And so those are, those are some of my concerns about this project. I don't, I don't think that any of those, I mean, those could be overcome. Perhaps there's still opportunities to, to coordinate there. But to me, I, I wouldn't want to act in a way that's different than the city's interest, different than the planning commission's recommendation, um, based on the information that's been presented.
Is that, are you wanting a continuance to look into it a little further or? Because I can share mine. For me, this one still comes back to the same theme. While I agree with much of what they've said, I just see this as a critical environment zone. And, and increasing density there is just not something I'm comfortable with, so. And so I, but I would really respect your opinion and your capacity to meet with them more and, you know, look into it farther. And part of this proposal is it's actually bigger than the proposal we had before, which give me even greater pause on it. Instead of, I forgot the other one was like 58 acres or something like that. And now we're jumping to 120 and kind of going, oh, we're adding and, 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 and the takeaway. So that was, that's my, my thought there. And so, but I, I.
Well, I guess.
I think you have a valid point. And if we are going to do this, we should make sure it's in coordination with the city and, and a longer term plan as to what incorporation on all of that looks like. And if that's going to take a little bit of time to work out, I'm not objected to a continuance and.
So, so I, I have a procedural question then is if, if that is the intent, that essentially if, if, if the expectation is that this exact same proposal, if it were to brought again in two weeks, would not, um, be approved, but that there's an opportunity to maybe work with the city of Payson, does, does, uh, voting against this now limit the property owner's ability to seek a modified request or? I'm not exactly sure who I'm looking to here in our.
We have to go through the whole process again, right? Back through planning?
Well, if you deny the request.
Well, if, if you deny the request today, then that resolves that they would have to start over again, if it's, if it's denied. But with regard to any action taken here, shouldn't have any effect on what the city might do.
So, the, um, uh, the, the question of, uh, it, it expanded, is, uh, in, from my understanding, is that, you know, originally, I think, you brought this forward on your own property, and then you, you, you contacted the other properties and said, hey, we're looking at this, and they said, yes, we also would like to, incorporate in, in, into this as well, uh, for a, you know, a, a look at what, that's, that's the reason for the,
I realize the reason for the expanded number of acres, and again, for me, the bottom line is, is that, well, now we're taking even more density into more critical environment by the expansion. And, and I recognize that it's, you know, I'm not disputing the fact that it's been at their request.
And so, and,
So, that's,
And, and, and look,
Oh, go ahead. I, I'm sorry, that, that's why we, Brandon had mentioned the fact that if we had property that was RA five, that touched RA five, it would help us, and that's, that's, that's why we did that. We went with something that would now border RA five, that would now make it possible for that RA five to be bordered and come up, and so we tried every, every, everything we could to do that, um, just simply because the county asked us to do that, again, we're, we're just trying to do what the county asks, and we don't see, Payson City, all their long range plans, they're not gonna come up that canyon, as far as we know, I don't think there's anything we can work with. And the only thing they're worried about is, Mayor Wright said it's gonna increase bus traffic, well, there's never been a school bus up that canyon, there's never been a school bus up that canyon. Uh, everybody up that, everybody up the canyon gets paid by the school district to bus their children. So, there's never been bus out that, so I don't know what Mayor Wright, maybe he doesn't understand that, but, there is no school bus traffic up that canyon, there's no, um, it's gonna be, at, at the most, again, eight building permits, it's not gonna increase that much. Uh, that was their concern, is it would increase their traffic on their, on their streets, um, that was their concern, and so, I don't see the Payson City will ever, they have no desires to annex that property, they have no way to get water to it, right now, the water that's come down that canyon's untreated. Um, I mean, all their wells are up in the, up in the, up in Payson Canyon.
They just, they just annexed the immediately adjacent property to you, right?
It's, it's not immediate, so the, the corner touches ours, it's just a small nineteen acre sliver that more or less surrounds their property, cause they have the whole, the two water towers there, and so, and trust me, we have tried to annex to Payson, Payson has no plans, and they've told us they have no plans, and they can't, because they can't service us, they cannot provide us water, they cannot, they, they would, you know, we'd have to bring sewer up the canyon, and then we would lose our well system, so it forced our hand that we had to drill a well, we tried to get, uh, water from them. But the, the fun, interesting part of this, again, like, it comes down to, you're learning it's more of who you know not so much what you know, that's what I'm learning, because when they, right now, first, you mentioned that the density is gonna increase, the density already, density already exists up that canyon. Every single home up that canyon, not a single one of them conform to a CE one zone. There's eleven homes up that canyon, none of them conform to, none, none of them have fifty acres, every parcel farther up the canyon, up to the mouth of the canyon, which is, um, again, I've, I'm just telling a little bit of history of myself, cause I'm, I've been a firefighter for Payson City as well, and a paramedic, and it's interesting when this, it, it is ambiguous where the beginning of the canyon begins. When we're dispatched up that canyon, it's interesting, they don't consider any of that, that, they still consider it Payson City, cause Payson City is cherry stemmed at Kiwanis Park farther up the canyon than our home. Um, and so, it's interesting to see the development coming around us, but we're getting closed and, you know, we're getting squeezed like a lemon, we have, we're, we're out of resources, and, and our trees are dying, and so the biggest thing is we're pushing for this, cause I, I fear, you know, if we didn't have, the improvements that had recently happened at the mouth of that canyon, where, and we appreciate everything the county did, they did widen that canyon, um, cause when we first lived there, it was a one, one-way bridge, you had to stop and wait for one car to go over, and, and that, now it's a nice big wide canyon. If they didn't do that improvement, when that airplane hit the house, the, the Yow's house, um, just this last fall, that fire would rush right up that canyon to our house and contributed to the, the chaos we had back in August and September, no doubt in my mind. So, improvement, I think it needs to, it, it needs to be controlled, it needs to be done appropriately, but we're, and, we're in a tough place that, I think we're gonna continue this rhetoric, if we get denied here, we've already been told that we cannot reapply, unless there's significant change to our application, cause this is our third attempt with the Planning Commission, second attempt with the County Commission. And so, that's where we're struggling to say, we're treading water, saying, hey, we're dying up that canyon with, with the, all the pressures around us of growth, but Payson doesn't want us, we're, we're stuck to need to, to do something. And that's where, that's where, and I have sat down, and I, I, unfortunately, I haven't had a chance to sit down and meet with you, Commissioner, uh, Ainge. I know I sat down with Commissioner Lee, and, you know, there's a lot of valid points, we're on board, and I believe, I sat down with Commissioner Ivy, and it felt like we were on point together. I know you feel as though maybe we increased the size of this beyond what I originally sat down with you, technically,
As I mentioned, there's, I think you bring some, this isn't an easy decision,
Yeah.
for me on, on any part, uh, there's a lot of conflicting, you know, reasoning in this, but for me, I have to find a point to make a decision on, and the CE one, because of the requirements, protects against overdensity. By moving it to a five acre development, you can arbitrarily significantly increase density, in, in a very critical environment, and that's where I get hung up, I think you guys bring a lot of very, very valid points, and it's certainly not an easy, these are never easy, generally, and this one is a very difficult one. And that's why I think you have the four two, and, and that's why I would, I would be happy to maybe do a continuance, and give Tanner some time to, to sit down and meet with you, and I can blow it over some more.
Can I ask some questions to you?
That's where I'm at on it, right now.
Thank you.
For, for discussion, um, you know, we have, we have, uh, developments that are way up the canyon, and Hovel Creek, and other areas that are way up our, the, the watershed areas, um, that, that are not on necessarily fifty, one per fifty acres, um, parcels, and, and this one's right next to a city, I mean, it's literally right there, I mean, you cross the boundary and you're right there.
I ride my bike up there a couple times all, all summer long, so, I'm incredibly familiar with it.
Beautiful canyon, I love it.
And so, when I, when I, when I'm personally looking at that, and I see, I see city right here, city boundary there, TR five right here, RA five right here, and they, you know, it almost doesn't really surround, but it's really close, it touches all the points of this property we're talking about, in, in this area, and then, for me, when I'm, when I, when I think of critical en, environment, a lot of it, a lot of it goes to water, because, uh, water in this, for us, is, is critical, it's critical for us. And yet, the water itself is all drawn from up above this property, where it goes down through the pipe. And, and, and so that's where they're collecting all their water to come back down through, of course, some does run, run through just on a natural basis, but for the most part, it dries up, because they collect it all up there and run it through. So, the critical environment portion, portion of this really starts to lessen, in, in my mind, when I, when I see, one, that we're not even, we're not even going after that, we're not even saying that, and then second, with the lack of water in the, in the, in that little area anyway, it would increase our fire risk if it's not managed, and if it's not managed, and the only way it can really be managed would be managed by individuals. Nature's not gonna manage, nature's just gonna, it'll burn it out or cause more problems, and so, for me, that's where I'm stepping and saying, you know what, I'd like to see it more, uh, managed, uh, as a, as a parcel, uh, with, you know, the property, kind of the property rights that they, are looking at as individuals there, and it seems to, it seems to mirror really nicely what's going on there, a lot more than what I see up in some of the other canyons.
So, in, in relationship to the water, I think you bring up a very valid point, and that is, is are we actually properly managing the water? Are we allowing too much to be taken from there and piped through other systems, and not enough to go down the canyon? Payson Canyon in particular, the lower portion, has been identified as an aquifer replenisher,
Sure.
for, for the aquifers that rest just below it, um, and so, I think that keys a greater question. Are we actually even appropriately managing this area to begin with, because of the fact, that we're allowing what should be a free flowing creek year round to become dry through the critical summer months? So, that's very concerning to me, and then that kind of doubles my concern on adding the potential, and I recognize that you guys, you know, are gonna build one home, but I have to look at this long term, increasing the potential density there in usage, what, where's the right balance there, is it, is it, so, well, we've got more people up there, so they're gonna hopefully keep their properties cleaned and, and reduce the fire? Or is it that we're actually currently mismanaging, because it should be a more properly managed critical environment, and there should be less water being piped and taken from that stream flow? And I think those are, you know, competing ideas.
Commissioner Ivy, I think that, I think that, um, the best that I can do on this would be a continuance. I think that would be the most favorable outcome that, um, we could do for the property owners here, and even that, I would say that this continuance is not, a continuance for one week, um, and it's not that it's probably gonna come in the exact same form, um, but it's going to be some, some correspondence with the applicant, and some communication with the city of Payson, to, to try to understand this a little bit more, but I, I would be willing to, that, so that would be what I would say.
And, and I, because of the delicate nature of this, and the fact that I want to make sure we do it right, I would think that a month would be more appropriate. And I recognize from a applicant standpoint, you're going, really?
We're, we're in no rush for time, we've been doing this,
But just remember that a month might get you away from two no votes today to maybe one or two yes votes, right, to where it could go, and we're not having to go through the whole entire process again. And so, that would be kind of my thought on, on that, is even though that potentially sounds like a long time, it certainly, you know, gives us the opportunity to continue to look at, at this, and work through some of those concerns.
I'm fine with that.
And trying to be responsive, cause again, this is a conflict issue, there's, there's a property rights, I'll just be blunt, nonassertive property rights part of me that just says I hate zoning altogether, right? And, and that we should just be responsible citizens, and they're able to do what we want, and, and unfortunately, we don't always conduct ourselves that way, so we've come up with these zoning laws, and, and trying to, to properly manage that is part of the heavy lift that we have as, as your elected official, and, so for me, it's trying to get it right.
We totally appreciate that, we can, again, we can, I can run, little vows to every tree that I own, on my property, but I can't run them to Morley's, I can't run them to my neighbor, and so I, I just, we're just trying to say that, that's one way. I, I guess our question is, we'll do anything the county, we've, we've tried to always do that, whatever the county asks us to do. Uh, my question is, what do you want us to do with Payson City, what do you want us to, what's, what's the objective to go to Payson City, to, to try to solve, I, I, I just don't, I guess I'm not understanding if you want us to go and ask them to annex?
You know, I, I think, I think as I've looked at these in the past, we, we tend to like to have development done in the cities, just, it just naturally fits that way. Um, and in the past, when we've looked at CE one or changing, changing, uh, zoning, it's always with an anticipation that the city has, you know, a favorable look at what's being done, so we don't get stuck for years with a subdivision that, now, doesn't get annexed in, so that conversation with, with, uh, Payson, I think would be appropriate. If they come back and say, there's no way, no how, there's no way that we can annex this property because of some of the things that you mentioned, because of the sewer lines, or the water, or whatever, that's a different conversation, because then, 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 uh, for us as a county, that's for us to, to manage, if they, if they have no intention at all of ever annexing up there because of those concerns, I would like to know that. Because then, that, that puts a lot more squarely on our shoulders for looking at how to, uh, properly manage that property.
And I think Payson City's, and, and I can't see what they're gonna say, but from talking to them in the past, uh, they're, that, that would require them to put a, a water treatment plant, somewhere up that canyon, and that's gonna be a huge expense, and I don't see Payson City saying, we're gonna put a water treatment up that plant, I mean, up that, up that creek. They, they bring all their spring water down, but it's untreated, and so, they're, they're, they don't, they have to bring it down into town to treat it, and if you're gonna do that, you have to have a water treatment plant above us, and I, I just don't see that, but I'll, we'll ask them that, we'll, we'll ask them, anything you ask us to ask them.
Well, and, and part of it will be, quite frankly, for my, I will communicate with them, I mean, one thing, you've, you've articulated the interest, but I think that, what I never wanna do is undermine a city's process, right? You're, you're saying they have no interest to go, but what I've seen happen in the past is the city is in the process of coming to terms with the property owner, of what they would like to see in order for annexation to happen, and the property owner might say, well, maybe we can get a better outcome by going to the county, and I don't wanna undermine something like that.
Yes, I totally understand.
In your case, you're saying that they really have no interest, uh, there's not, there's no deals on the table, of which they've asked you to do to be part of the annexation plan. So, I just wanna confirm that with the city as well.
Dave Tuckett and I are best friends, I mean, I, I love Dave Tuckett, I'd never under, ever tried to undermine Dave, ever, and, and I don't bear, I don't Mayor Wright that well, but I know Dave, we've been lifelong friends, so I, I would never try to undercut Payson City, and, and, uh, we just wanna make sure that, uh, that we can do what you ask us to do, and if, if you're gonna work with them, we'll also, I'll go to Mayor Wright and see if I can sit down with him and go through his concerns on his letter, and see if we can address those, I'll, I'll, we'll do that, that's easy.
Okay. Well, thank you, sounds like we've got a motion possible.
Move that we continue regular agenda item number twelve for one month.
Second, I've got a motion and a second to continue regular agenda item number twelve for one month, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We need to put a date on that, or one month, is that good enough for you to, or not?
April ninth.
April ninth, okay, fair enough. Okay. Twenty, uh, now we're on agenda item number twenty-one, and, and this is, uh, an actionable item. I don't know if there's any questions for, I just, I just, it was just an actionable item.
I have no concerns with it.
Were denied, so I, if no find, okay, go ahead, motion.
Move that we approve regular agenda item number twenty-one.
Second, I have a motion and a second to approve agenda item number twenty-one, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
That passes three zero.
I do have a question for you, if you go on, though, um, item number twenty-seven, I believe you'd left it on consent. We need to have action on that as well.
Oh, good pick.
Complicating, Richard, wait a minute.
That's that one. So, I guess we'll just pull it off consent and take action on it.
I move that we pull item number twenty-seven off consent, and that we approve it.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve, uh, item number twenty-seven on our regular agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, thank you, Richard, for catching that. Okay, number thirty-two, uh, is to approve and authorize commission chair to sign a real estate purchase agreement with, and this is basically for, uh, Central Utah Water.
Correct, this is like the others we've done along Salem Canal Road, another, another one of those parcels, uh, they've been paid through Central.
I don't have any problems, uh, with it, they're, they're, you know, upon approval, um, there does need to be some changes, to make it updated to twenty nineteen, instead of twenty,
On the signature page?
Yeah.
I, I have the updated city, city page here.
And then, and then second, I just wanted to make sure that it's, that it's clear that, um, uh, although, although it says in the, in the agreement that the county will be paying the rollback taxes, and also, uh, the settlement, the settlement costs,
Correct.
that, that we're, we're doing this in behalf of Central Utah Water,
Correct.
and so, those, in essence, they will be paying us.
All of those costs will be paid by,
Although, although technically, we are gonna be paying them, we're gonna be reimbursed for, I just wanted to make sure that was absolutely clear, just especially on the rollback taxes, that we're not, we're not paying the rollback taxes, the entity that's ultimately gonna have it is, is paying them.
Move that we approve regular agenda item number thirty-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve agenda item number thirty-two, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, that passes three zero. Thirty-four is to approve and authorize commission chair to sign an agreement with Qualtrics. And I am, I was the one that held this, I just wanna get to it, I have some discussion items as well.
Go ahead. Paul, yeah, can you come up? One of the questions that I had, my, my understanding, I'm not sure that the agreement that has been uploaded on this agenda item is, is ready. There's been some discussion about, uh, there's a couple of terms that are important to me, one is, this contract, you know, I did not want to enter into a multi-year binding commitment, as this is a new tool that we are getting up to speed on, and we wanna make sure that it's implemented right, so, I know that we asked for, I don't know if we've received confirmation, or this draft doesn't have that ability for us to terminate it.
Correct.
But, so, but we've asked for that, is that correct?
Yes, um, I just, just yesterday, I sent, uh, a revised agreement out, and, uh, with some, with some follow-up questions to Qualtrics. I haven't received a response back yet. As to the multi-year issue, I actually wasn't as concerned as you, but, of course, you, you know, but I was not as concerned, because the master agreement was for three years, with a possibility of, But I was not as concerned because the master agreement was for three years with a possibility of renewal for two more years. But the um, statement of work was, was, was for one year. So the financial obligation was only a one-year financial obligation with the opportunity to enter into more statements of work under the three to five-year master agreement. But um, certainly we could work it out.
I'd like to clarify, just to make sure that they can't go back to the contract and, but um, and the other request was, my understanding was that from a purchasing procedure, one of the reasons we were n- not required to go through an RFP in this instance was because there's a state contract. And we had a price match with the state contract. But they put it on our own paper with a customized agreement with us. And there was a small hiccup that there is no, if we're using that as our justification of the price contract or the state contract. The state contract has an intermediary um, dealer or broker. And so the question is, what's the true comparable price? And so that would be, that would be my request is I'm, I know that the chair may have other questions, but I would be supportive of moving forward with this agreement on the condition that we get some benefit of there not being an intermediary involved. And that we have the earlier termination option in the contract.
Right. It might be clean, I mean, I don't know if the, if the board would be willing to look at uh, moving this out one week, but it would maybe give us the time to sort of.
I mean, I, I have confidence that, that there would be an acceptance of those terms.
Right.
And so I'm, I'm comfortable doing it on a contingent basis.
And I had some similar questions and I think they're answered there, especially if we, uh, if we continue it for a week to clear them up. Um, if, if we do continue it for a week to clear it up, there's a couple of things that I'd, I'd like to have cleared it up too. And, and, and that is, uh, where's, where's the money coming from, you know, for this? And if we're, if we're doing this as a master service level agreement for the entire county, um, I'm, I'm sure maybe that the health department and some of the others may want to use their services as well. And so uh, I'd like to have some conversations with the other departments that would uh, benefit from this, you know, for, for, for budget. Budget matters. Um, and, and see what they would like to, uh, you know, how, how, how much they'd like to contribute or be a part of it as well. Okay.
There was some discussion about kind of um, and I don't have all the information, but there was some discussion that there are possibly some other departments who are using Qualtrics right now.
There are.
The auditors department may have used them in the past. I don't know if they're currently. Using them.
We currently have an active contract that hasn't expired, but we were just gonna pull that. Yeah, it's close to expiring. So we were gonna pull that and look at the details on when that expires.
So we should have that overall conversation in the county to see. I don't know if, I don't know if the health departments. I know they've used them in the past.
We, we use them for one particular project, but haven't used them since.
Yeah. I don't know if you have needs in the future. Do you have needs in the future this year?
Uh, we'd have to look at.
Okay.
But under this, my understanding is that you'd have a master service level agreement and then you would have specific um, statements of work for different projects.
Right. Okay. All right. So it's, we, we can have some more conversations. It looks like anyway, we, if we continue it for a week. But I, I mean, I'm generally in favor of.
That's, I think this particular agenda item for me was starting the ball rolling essentially.
Yeah.
Right. That this is because of the nature of where our office works, this is how we got it rolling and that I'm supportive of this in general. I think it's a great tool and will be good for us. And I think we've had, I know with my system and I, we've already looked at some funding that we've identified in areas. Uh, the potential return from the fair covers a large portion of this. And so I think we can find the money rather easily without having to take it from anywhere else. In some of those savings areas that we've already occurred this year. So that it's just working out those things, but it kinda needed to get on the agenda so that we could actually work those things out.
I agree that some of the savings in our budget have, have put us in a position to seriously consider this. I think that the coordination with the other departments, especially, I, I, I wasn't aware of an existing, even if it's about to terminate contract with the clerk auditor. I thought everything had been terminated. So on that basis, I would um, make a motion that we continue item thirty-four for one week.
Second.
We got a motion and a second to continue item number thirty-four for one week. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And that passes three zero. We, we don't need thirty-six. We. Oh, okay. It looks like we need them all then. All right.
I wait for your standing.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just ready to ask this right out in the open to Dave. Can we just say item number thirty-five through thirty-eight? Like we do with everything else?
We already asked that question. How many times do we ask it?
We'll see if Dave gives us a different answer.
I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna go with it and tell the attorneys to object. I move that we approve number items thirty-five through thirty-eight.
I'll second it.
Just to clarify that I think as a part of your motion that all those will be set at, at exactly the same time.
Okay. Daytime, location.
I move that we, that uh, we approve items number thirty-five, thirty-eight to be held in closed session at today's date and this location immediately following this meeting.
Second.
Dave, you're getting soft. You never let us do that in the past. Okay, we got a motion and a second, uh, and I, I like that.
I'm a little concerned, Tanner. He's only had to hear from you from like, what, two months and he's already letting you be quiet.
So I got a motion and a second to uh, to approve and set that date, time and location for items thirty-five, thirty-six, thirty-seven and thirty-eight. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next week, they're just going on consent, by the way.
That passes three zero. Okay, we will, thank you for being here. We'll move into our closed meetings. That was a miss on my part.
So I appreciate the time for public comment. I know it was a little bit long meeting there, so. My name's Patrick Beaker. I am with the Southwest Regional Council of Carpenters. Wanted just to uh, kind of let you guys, guys know what's going on in the construction industry these days. The payroll fraud is getting completely out of hand. Okay, payroll fraud that we run into are contractors are hiring subcontractors who in turn hire second tier subcontractors who in turn pay cash money under the table. And it's absolutely rampant. For almost thirty years, I've been in the commercial industry doing uh, metal stud framing and drywall. The day I got out of residential almost thirty years ago, I thought, thank goodness, I get away from the, from those practices. Well, now it's in the commercial end. We've seen it at the Provo courthouse here. We see it at Silicon Slopes. We see it on virtually every project we go on unless there's, we know there's a handful of responsible contractors in town. When we're dealing with these kinds of amounts of cash on a weekly basis, you gotta start wondering where that cash is coming from? With money laundering schemes from the cartels? I mean, the, the small time labor coyotes are dealing with twenty-five thousand dollars a week of cash money that they're paying their workforce. So where's that money coming from? I don't think it's legit. I think it's, I really honestly, I can't pin it down, but I'm pretty sure it's a, a lot of money laundering schemes coming from the uh, cartels. So when this is happening, you got a workforce that's not covered, covered under workers' comp. They're not covered under any type of uh, unemployment insurance. They are paying no state or federal taxes. Oftentimes, they're claiming zero income. So their wives are um, over at the welfare offices collecting the social services that are offered to the, the poor. You know, those, those funds are there for people that need it. You got guys that are making a thousand bucks a week, cash money, and they're on welfare. At the same time, school lunches, and then they're just a total suck on the community. At some point, we gotta get into the contracts. When you guys are approving taxpayer money for, for certain projects, we gotta look at the contracts. Because what happens now is you sign a letter of compliance. So I comply. I comply with all that. There's no enforcement. The enforcement is so little out there. Just in January, DOPL, I believe, got about eighty complaints from homeowners with their contractors and anything else. They've got like two or three investigators. So Department of Licensing spends all their time running around taking care of these things. Well, it's, it's, it's blowing up. They don't have the means to, to address the problems. But if it's in the contracts that these people will be held accountable, it's gonna go a long way. What happens now? Contracts are let out. We go out, we talk to the workforce, we find out what's going on. We go report it to DOPL, the Department of Labor, uh, tax commissions. They start investigating. Often they're really lengthy investigations. By the time they, they could say, yep, it's happening there, the job's done. The, the, the workforce is spread out to other projects. So it's, it's, it's like herding cats trying to, to get this under control. If we get into the contracts that there's some serious penalties if you're not playing by the rules, it will, it should help them not come into play because it's not just the cost of doing business. So instead of the same old routine now where we go out and fight it because we're, we're trying to preserve a, a, a standard of living and get it back into those contracts to where if you do get caught, there's some pretty serious penalties, it might help deter it once it's found out. Right? So right now, we go find it and then it just keeps, it keeps going, keeps going, it keeps going. We keep monitoring projects that we brought up to these different organizations. They're doing their part. But again, if it's a lengthy investigation, by the time they're done investigating, the project's done. And there's no impact on it. So I've found it really interesting, you were talking about the airport bringing in tourism because that tourism is gonna help replenish that tax fund, right? Well, who's replenishing the tax fund when massive amount of the labor is working for cash in the construction industry? Legitimate contractors are, are really considering closing their doors. And I talk to them daily. And they say, we are this close to closing our doors because, because we can't compete in that market and we refuse to use that business model. The statewide problem, I've been fighting it, getting it addressed, making people aware of it. More so in Salt Lake County for the last two years. Uh, I live in Utah County, so I decided I'd take this opportunity to kinda let you guys know what's going on in this market. Um, in this industry. Be happy to answer any questions about it. I'm looking probably for a little guidance on where else I can, can take this to inform the public. So I think if the public knew what was going on, the room would be full and people would be saying, this needs to stop. So I appreciate the time. Again, I'm available.
Question for you.
Yes, sir.
Um, I worked multiple years in this, in this arena and, and yes, I, I saw it as well. It's not like it's not happening. But you pointed out the enforcement part of this thing. And even, even in contracts, it becomes really sticky too, because when you're doing a subcontractor, you don't, you don't necessarily guide them. You don't go, guide them and say, give me all, you know, let's, let's make sure and check all your, 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 your W twos or everything that comes along with it. You just assume that they're, they're taking care of that on their own business entity. So what, how do you propose that? That us as an organization, Utah County is an organization looking at contracts, how would we, how would we help to uh, to get rid of this problem?
Certified payroll? If the subcontractor has to certify the payroll of his guys and any subcontractor that they use as a second tier sub? Think that may help. I mean, there's, there's a lot of others.
They just give it under the table. This, they just pay under the table.
Well, but every day they have a sign.
You have one guy getting paid and you have five guys there.
Right, but they have, every day they have a sign in sheet for pre-task that they turn into the general contractor. Cause the guys that I know that are working for cash money are signed in on that, the first tier subcontractors sign in for pre-task. You know, to be safe, make sure you're using your, your face shields and, and following all the safety on the job. Well, they show up, it's, it's pre-filled out and all they do is sign in. They're not even doing a pre-task, so. But that could be used to say, well, you've got twenty guys signed in on your pre-task. Those, those should be your employees. Show me payroll for those twenty, cause you're probably fine too.
So you'd have the super out there doing that every morning?
Superintendent gets them turned into them every day. I spent
Yeah.
Twenty-eight years as a project superintendent. I turned one in every day with the list of my manpower to the general contractor.
Yeah.
And I have photocopies of ones that are going on now. And I know that eighty percent of the guys on that list are getting paid cash money. We've got documented proof of this. And I've got documentation after documentation of it going on.
I feel it. I, I saw it. I, I know that it goes on.
And legitimate companies are suffering and legitimate workforce is suffering, cause I would never go to that end. Right? So I, you start ending up with choices. Either jump into that market or don't work. Because the contractors that are securing that work are cheating. So where does it leave the legitimate contractors and legitimate workforce? You know, I, I went to a, through an apprenticeship. I'm a, I'm a professional carpenter. And opportunities are shrinking daily. And I see it every day and it's a huge concern of mine. We gotta protect that market. We gotta protect that workforce. And we also have to capture those tax dollars when public money is going into these projects. So, some of that should be coming back into the public. You know, where does the education funding come from? Payroll tax, right?
Okay, yep.
So how many teachers are, are we short?
True. Yep. Yeah, that's a problem.
Huge problem.
Sure.
So thank you for your time. Appreciate it.
Thanks. All right. Any other public comment? Seeing none? Looks like he's going with the right person. We'll move into our closed meetings. Thank you.
Oh, it's a problem. Holy cow, it's a problem.